Today is May 11, 2016. Time is 10:00 a.m. I call the meeting of the Monongate County Commission to order. I let the record reflect that Commissioner Hawkins, Commissioner Bloom, and Commissioner Callen are present. Will everyone please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge of the flag? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First up is Renata.
Morning.
Good morning.
We have two exoneration listings this morning for 1,243.74 fiduciary orders of May the 11th, and then there will be a petition to compel the preparation of an annual accounting in the estate of Rose Zilkannich Fraley. I believe I say that right. We have minutes from March 30th work session, April 6 regular meeting and work session, and also April 6 election record book vouchers, General County $97,048.42. Camp Muffley $6,173.53. Mason Dixon Park $597.09. Susser's valuation $48.06. Star City Tiff $60,005.2089. Morgantown Industrial Tiff $20,024.14. Mont General Tiff $151.021.35. University Town Center Tiff $212.642.33. Purchasing card vouchers, General County $21,115.11. 911 $10,0271.93. Camp Muffley $503.52. Mason Dixon Park $72.56. For a total of $580,654.93. We have no budget revisions. And also, just to announce again, the position vacancy for boards and authorities, Development Authority, Historic Landmarks Commission, Planning Commission, one on the Chief View PSD and one on the River Road PSD.
And the parks.
And the parks. Let me add that to my list. So we probably want to do a separate motion on the fiduciary-
You want to accept the petition, everything but the petition.
Okay. So I move, I move the motion except for the fiduciary petition.
Second.
I have a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you. Okay. What time is the petition scheduled for?
It's not on, it's not scheduled.
Right.
It's just part of the fiduciary package.
So I'd like to-
So it's not separately scheduled?
Yes, sir.
Was anyone going to be here?
No, sir.
Does, what's the, what's the feelings of the commission? We might as well discuss it since there's no one present to bring it out based on the reading of the petition. Basically, they're, they're asking, they're, they're asking that annual accountants be completed and stating that they have not been completed. We could deny the petition or we could refer it to a fiduciary commissioner to take evidence on the petition to determine whether there's grounds to issue such an order or to take any other action necessary.
I, I feel more comfortable we would just assign it to the fiduciary just so that we, you know, it is reviewed. So I so move.
It's currently assigned. It's just the order.
Yeah, it's just-
It's currently assigned, yes.
We just need an order.
We just, it's just assigning this additional petition to the same commissioner, which would be Commissioner Armstead, yes.
I so move. I would second that. But while the board has to proceed.
Now, the only, the only concern I have, but it appears, I, I know the parties, so Mike, if I didn't know the parties, my concern would be what's the size of the state and how much it's going to cost them to do a fiduciary commissioner. But I, I am fairly confident that the, that this wouldn't be a hindrance to the overall claim of the estate. So that's all I wanted to say. I have, any further discussion on that issue? I have a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Just refer this petition over to George Armstead and as the fiduciary commissioner, ask him to hold an evidentiary hearing and whatever he found is appropriate to make recommendations to us. Okay. All right. The next thing on the list is comments from the public. Do we have any comments from the public? We don't have any public here. Of course, Ben, I think he likes, you consider yourself public, Ben, or?
Oh, sir.
Okay. Comments from public is closed. Okay. We don't have any introduction to employees.
Well, we did.
They had a show.
Oh.
Okay. Colleen, we're moving ahead a little quicker, but more-
I have a request for reimbursement for the ESG Mont 9 in the amount of $14,644.71. And then I also have an applicant, a grant application for the Governor's Highway Safety Program.
Okay, that's an application. This is reimbursement?
That's a reimbursement.
Okay, we need a motion on the reimbursement. Is this the only reimbursement?
It's the only one.
Move to approve the reimbursement, second.
I have a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Which one do I sign? Here, 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 here? Okay.
Here's your life, your first born.
My firstborn hand away.
Okay. And the application is for the Governor's Highway Safety Program in the amount of $202,000. And you just need to sign the conditions and assurances.
Move that he's permitted to sign, second.
Now, you said conditions and assurances. Is that my firstborn also? I'd already just gave it away to the other one.
I will accept your second.
Second, yes.
Second, more than this one. Did I, did I take a vote on that? I have a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you. Thank you, Colleen. Appreciate your work. Okay. Correspondents? Renata.
Yes, sir. We have a letter from the Assistant Director of the Homeland Security Emergency Management, Pam Feathers. She attended the Mecca Policy Board meeting and is informing us the date unanimously voted to have James Smith serve as interim director of the Mont County Emergency Management Mecca 911 Office effective May 1st. And until such time, position is currently filled. Interview board has been selected and the process has begun for job advertisement and to select possible candidates. We ask for your consideration in this manner, and if you have any questions, please feel free to contact our office.
Include, include salary adjustment?
Salary adjustment, yes.
And this is, this is just a confirmation of the policy board's decision?
Yes.
I so move.
Second.
I have a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Jimmy Smith is a good man.
He is.
Okay. Do we have any other correspondence?
Yes, I do. Received on Friday, we received our National Association of Counties newsletter, and we are actually in the county spotlight, safe and secure roles during National County Government Month.
Want to just read what it says?
Yeah.
Monongate County, West Virginia, set up an essay writing contest for middle eighth graders. The winners shadowed the county commissioners and administrator for day and lead a commission committee. So we are along with several other counties throughout the country.
They put a, actually, we were the first, and a lot of those followed from our previous ones.
Yep.
Done the same thing. And they also, Mike, you're, they put a link to your, your tape on, on National Association of Counties. So people all around the, all around the world get to see this. It's exciting that Monongate County is getting that kind of recognition for the good things we're doing. Commissioner Bloom, do you want to say anything?
No, I'm thrilled that Monongate County is getting recognized, not only for its ingenuity, but also that others are, we're able to share that with others in the, in the country. And I'm real pleased with that.
It's always good to see the good things being recognized.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any further correspondence?
No, sir.
Okay. We've got this townhouse thing. What are we going to do with it? Is that in new business?
That is after we deal with the Tiff stuff.
Okay. All right. I just, do we have any unfinished business?
No, I'm not.
Could I just bring up a positive thing?
Yes.
Since Cat is here from Superintendent Chestnut Ridge Park, congratulations, you know, the levy passed. Now, that's the easy part. Now, the hard part is, you know, coming through. What I was going to ask with the commission's permission, I know there's an eclectic group that, that's under the One Parks area, and I was wondering if you would be willing to just organize, to get everyone together so they could start coming up with plans so they could come back to us. So I think the one thing people want to see is a plan, you know, a five-year plan, and people want to see how it's done. And I was just asking the president, we would have to approve it, but I think it's a great idea if, you know, when things calm down, to try and get everyone together and start looking at how we want to move forward on it. And really, since it's all new to us, and we're busy with so many other things, I think your group needs to do it. Is that not correct, and then come down?
Well, yeah, I mean, basically, I mean, it's because that particular levy was a coordination and collaboration between different groups.
Right.
Unlike the libraries that have One Direction, the public transit that has One Direction, even the volunteer fire departments has One Direction because they've signed the amounts. The, what Commissioner Bloom asked me was that different parks and different parts of that collaboration would need funding on different things at different times. And he asked me if that, that was legitimate. Yes, it's legitimate. The, the money will always be dedicated to that line item, that group, and utilized. However, the group could get together, and let's say, for instance, Mon Rail Trails wants to expand an access or something like that, and they require more than their allotment for that quarter to complete that. But Chestnut Ridge, next project won't be for nine months or a year from now. Then that group can make a, basically, a distribution plan, distribution, direction and distribution plan-
Yeah.
-that would be submitted to the commission with the consent of the, the parties, and then we would be able to, if we thought it was a good idea or a good approach, we would be able to adopt the plan. And that then would give the sheriff and the tax office a direction of distribution rather than you collect this portion and then you get, you get a $50 check and the other gets a $50 check. That's what he's saying, and he's asking, Commissioner Bloom is asking you if you would sort of chair that thing and get it, get it organized.
Would it not be wise to fill out our boards so that they would be able to give also input into this?
Oh, yes. That's a, that's a good point.
We're doing that, and that way you at least have the board from each, the president of each board-
Participate as well.
Participate as well.
Yeah, I think so.
And just as brought to my clarification, once the election is certified, I mean, that we would move forward, but at least we could start generally discussing the positive steps and taking-
Well, there were, yeah. And also, he's just trying to get you started early.
Yeah.
Basically, basically, I mean, there, there's not going to be any distribution on this thing until probably after December at the earliest, if, if then.
Right.
So.
It'll give us time to make a good plan.
Yeah, and that's exactly, and I think that's what the key, the people voted for this, and I think it's real important that they see the plan.
They see what the metrics are to beat.
And that, that's key. Yeah. And, yeah.
Well, and Jenny Dinsmore and I talked for a good bit last night, you know, it, it's really exciting that they are, they are looking at expanding service with the pass of this levy.
Yeah.
The transit.
Yes.
And they're looking at going into areas they couldn't get to before. So there's a lot of exciting things that's going to come out of this, and it's going to take, as both of you said, it's going to take a lot of planning to come up with a good plan. So.
Well, thank you. Okay, I think that's a great idea. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that-
Yes, I'll pull her together.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Any further unfinished business? New business. Mr. Amen, we have you today, and you-
And you brought a helper, I assume.
Counsel to Master Developer.
Oh, okay.
I was going to say, seems like I've met you before. Can you, can you identify yourself?
Carrie Cecil with Stonemont House and Battle.
Okay. That was just for Jenny's benefit.
Thank you.
And Master Developers, that sounds like a very important word, doesn't it?
Yeah. That's right. That's right. I mean, I worked in Washington, DC for 10 years, and in Washington, DC, didn't matter what you did, it didn't matter really what you made, or all that matters is what your title was.
All right. And how important it sounded, right?
Yes, that's right.
That's why I'm talking about the Terry.
Thank you. Yep, so you had everyone one of those fancy business cards with that big title on there, you know. So, now, we're not implying that that, that shoe at all. It's a very important title, Master Developer.
I think they're also well compensated as well.
Tom, you've got the floor.
Yeah, okay. So it's Tom Amen with Steptone Johnson, and of course, bond counsel to the county commission on the town center project and for those special districts.
Tom, I apologize for interrupting you. I probably should have read this for the benefit of the camera, so they know what we're talking about.
Sure, yes.
Are we going to, we going to do A and B together? Or one and then the other?
We'll probably do one and then the other.
And then the other, okay. So I'll just read the first one then. The first agenda item is to consider for adoption a bond authorizing resolution and order the county commission which would authorize the issuance by the county commission of its $31,385,000 amended and restated Series 2014B excise tax revenue bonds with respect to the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District, the excise tax district, in exchange for the county commission's outstanding $21,830,000 Series 2014B excise tax bonds for the purpose of moving the current bonding capacity available pursuant to the county commission's outstanding Series 2014A property tax bonds to the Series 2014B excise tax bonds in connection with the financing of a new interchange to Interstate 79 within the excise tax district and related matters.
Well, that clearly states the whole thing. I think we can just move on.
Can we just move forward?
That's right. That's, well, it, the record's complete now, so.
That's right. Okay, so just very broad brush kind of background, we did close, as you all know, on the 2014 bond issue. So we have two districts, just so we make it clear for everyone, a property tax increment financing district and a excise tax district, which is basically a sales tax district. And we have two series of bonds that have been issued in 2014 for property tax, and then three series for the excise tax. And those were primarily to finance infrastructure improvements, the property tax bonds, the Series B for infrastructure improvements on the east side, so the existing town center development, and then the A series to finance any additional costs that might be incurred on the interchange project. So that's the new interchange that we have off of 79. Then for the excise tax, we have a Series A bond that was issued to, to finance the ballpark project, so the baseball park, and then two series that were issued for the interchange. One that was placed with DOH as sort of a reimbursement mechanism to them, to reimburse them for costs that they would incur and pay to construct the interchange, and then a Series C bond that was basically just to cover the closing costs for the transaction. And basically, what we have is the master developer is proposing to move forward with additional infrastructure improvements, primarily on the west side and the town center. But in order to do that, and that would be a property tax bond issue, but in order, in order to do that, as I said, we already have existing bonds outstanding, so we've got to do some restructuring of that in order to accomplish it. And so what we would plan to do is then the 9.6 million in Series A property Tiff bonds for the interchange would be moved over pursuant to the consent of all the parties and increase in kind the principal amount of the Series B excise tax that was issued for the interchange so that, you know, all the addition, all the initial bonding amounts that were put in place for DOH to build the interchange would still be available. There would be no additional indebtedness from an overall perspective, but it's just a shifting of that amount from the property tax to the excise tax. And we're obtaining the consent of DOH, and we're having meetings with them later today, and we'll have more discussions with them prior to closing on this. But they'll be fully informed and in agreement as to everything that's going on, as well as the trustee and the other holder of the 50% pledge of that piece of the revenues, which is Mont View, will be in agreement as well. So this is just to, I, I think the, and I don't have the exact numbers, but the existing excise tax bonds probably need, just based on rough estimates, maybe another four to four and a half million of dollars to reimburse DOH for costs in addition to the existing excise tax bonds. So there may be some, you know, we're moving 9.6 over, so what I'm saying is we may not need all of that, but there would be mechanisms in place that, you know, whatever they need, they will get, and the remainder will sort of fall off. So just a quick chart just outlines that, and I've handed out to you, and you can see what all the principal amounts of all those series of bonds are, and just illustrating that on the Series B excise tax, we're increasing that amount to 31,385. And that's an additional $9,605,000 less $50,000 that they had already drawn on that series. The other, the other excise tax bonds are remaining the same, for the ballpark, $22,165, and for the Series C excise tax, $670,000. And just as a reminder, there's a split, they're just so, the only security for those excise tax bonds is the excise tax revenues. 50% is allocated to the ballpark, 50% to the interchange. So that's how that is being arranged. And the, on the property tax side, the Series B infrastructure bonds in the amount of $4,500,000, those will stay in place. The Series A property tax for the interchange, those will be repaid and discharged, those won't be outstanding. And in essence, we'll have an exchange of the, this new amended and restated Series B bond for the existing Series A property tax bond and the existing Series B excise tax bond. Those bonds will be discharged and we'll be left with this one series of excise tax. And then, well, two ser, two series of excise tax, three, so we'll still have three series, and that one series of property tax bonds, again, with the plan that there would be a future property tax bond issue likely this year that would refinance that and also finance the additional infrastructure improvements.
That's right.
Yeah.
In layman's terms, Tom, tell me if I'm wrong. We're adding to our house. We've got a much bigger house, but we share it with four, three or four or five other people. And we are restructuring our financing in order to allot our financing to the expansion and cover what we've already paid for.
That's the overall plan.
That's it.
Well, the only thing that I would add is the fact that the reason it was structured when we initially issued the bonds this way was because the development office and its approval had limited the amount of sales tax bonds that could be issued. Since we have this additional capacity, we were able to restructure it in this manner to facilitate the project.
Yeah, that was why it was so important last year to get that additional capacity. That gives us an opportunity to restructure. And actually, of the 30-year, my, my understanding, discussion with Tom, is of the 30-year life of this Tiff, we're only going to, what, 2018? Is that what we decided it was?
Yeah, the projections are, are going to be that for this amended and restated Series B bond, it's pushing, and these are just based on projected future collections of revenues, that those bonds would be repaid instead of June, the original estimate, June 1, 2025.
Oh, 25, I'm sorry.
Would now be June 1, 2029.
Right, right. So 29, so, I'm sorry, I said 18, I meant 29.
Yeah.
28, 29. That still leaves about 10 years of capacity.
13 years.
Right.
13 years.
13 capacities.
Yeah, that's why it's still going to do.
Over 10 years' capacity.
Yes.
So it's really exciting because this whole project and, you know, we got to recognize Mont View and the Lynch's and the Master Developers. They have, they have worked so well with us. I think Tom would echo that as, as well in, in understanding. I know some of this might get rather complex, but Tom, you do a great job in breaking it down, and we appreciate all your work on this.
I move for adoption of the bond authorizing resolution and order.
Second.
I have a motion in second and further discussion. There are none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay, the next one. To consider for adoption a resolution and order of the county commission relating to the proposed issuance by the county commission of its property tax increment revenue bonds with respect to the county commission of Monongate County Development District Number Four, the property Tiff district at University Town Center in an amount not to exceed $35 million for the purpose of currently refunding the county commission's outstanding Series 2014 property tax bonds issued for the property Tiff district at University Town Center in financing the design, acquisition, construction, and equipping of additional improvements with respect to such district. Tommy touched on this. Is there anything you want to add to it?
Well, the only thing is that, just to complete the circle of what we started talking about, this is for the property tax bond issue, and it's an, it's an inducement resolution. It's not quite to the level of a bond authorizing resolution and order. It's more of a preliminary step to that. And it basically says that the county will consider the adoption of a future bond order, the amount not to exceed $35 million for the issuance of property tax bonds that would repay this remaining $4.5 million of the Series V property tax and then finance these additional infrastructure improvements on the west side. And, you know, of course, it's conditional on the county thing, you know, receiving satisfactory proposals from prospective purchasers of the bonds, county satisfied with all the terms, and also the structure and the revenue coverages that are available to repay those bonds. It's authorizing the placement agent, Piper Jaffray, to approach banks and solicit proposals for the, for the purchase of those bonds, and appointing Steptone Johnson as your bond counsel for that project, and Piper Jaffray as the placement agent. And that's basically it for the inducement resolution. If you actually wanted to add anything?
No, I think it's, it's, it's more straightforward than the one you just said.
This one's an easier one, yeah.
This is just, we're, we're looking at the, the value increase, rapidly increased values over there in, in land that was abandoned, coal mines, and it clearly, the, the proposal- Uh, and it, it clearly, the, the, the proposal, uh, clearly supports the thirty-five million and so I don't think there's any problem here, but it authorized them to start shopping around. I like to put it in layman's terms, but basically it starts shopping around for that thirty-five million support for those roads over there.
Move for adoption of the resolution and order.
Second.
I have a motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
And I will make sure I never say you helper again, but blur for the master builder. I've written that down, make sure I don't say that again.
That's good, Tom. Uh, just, uh, uh, Tom, uh, mentioned it, uh, before, uh, but just as a way of a report, Tom, Amen and, uh, I are going, are you going with us too?
I'll be there.
You're going with us too?
Not to help with the master builder.
The master builder. We're, we're, we're all going to meet with the DOH, uh, uh, counsel to finalize and, and put all these things into action this afternoon. So, I'm really excited about the web of four lane roads we're going to have over there once it all gets done. It's, uh, an abandoned coal mine, you never realized that was such a thing.
For sure.
But we're going to, we're going to be leaving around noon today. Are you gonna, we're, we're finished kind of early, or are you going to head back to Carthberg, will we pick you up on the way or what do you want to do?
If that works for you, I think that...
That works for me and then, and when you come back, you can just drop me off at my vehicle and I can come on home, then you don't have to drive back here.
That makes sense.
So, you're, you're, you're right at, uh...
I'm right at, right off the interstate, off of the Jerry Dove.
Jerry Dove Drive, right there, big sign that says Steptone Johnson.
That's right.
You need to put your name right under one of those windows, I don't know what's going on.
I don't think, I don't think my partners would.
They would allow that. Yeah, how about you? Did your master developer allow you to put your name underneath it?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's been around for a long time.
Thank you all very much. Is there anything else, either one of you want to add?
I think so.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Have a positive day.
I'll see you probably, uh, around twelve, twelve-thirty at the latest.
That's fine. Sounds good, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Good seeing you. Okay, next thing on the agenda is consideration of a request from Lockview Limited Partnership for a letter of support for the allocation of the federal low-income housing tax credits for the funding of the construction of the Lockview townhouses on the Grafton Road. Was anyone going to be present here for this?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Fox, the guy that made the request, he is from Wheeling, his office is in Wheeling.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't know whether they would come. This is something that we've done in, in the past. This, they have to get the, uh, it, it really doesn't involve any county money, any local money. What it does is, uh, we, we accept the project as a good, uh, project for federal low-income housing tax credits. Uh, you can see the description here, uh...
Something that is strongly needed and I, I think all three of us are, you know, very excited that, that we're able to start doing this right now.
Great, and it's, uh, you know, we're looking at, um, income levels of twelve thousand to fourteen thousand gross per year.
Wow.
Uh, two-bedroom rentals of four hundred dollars or fi- up to five twenty-five and three-bedroom, uh, models up to six twenty-five. So, that's, uh, that, that is part of the plan and they need the endorsement of the local, uh, levy entity, in this case, the county, uh, to find that this project is a good project for our county, is basically all we're saying and that we support their, their application for a tax credit. The decision will, of course, still be made by the... So, having, if, I don't know if you, either one of you had a chance to review this whole package?
Yes.
What, what's the wishes of the commission?
Move for approval and support.
Second. I'm assuming that the blank pages in between are just a blank page.
Yeah.
Every other page is a blank play.
Well, I mean, there were, I'm just assuming that that was just a spacer, I mean, was there something?
There's just blank sheets.
Well, maybe, maybe it got ran through on two-sided to one-sided when it was copied for you all.
Every other page is blank, I just figured out.
Well, I was just, I was just checking to make sure that they, I did read, I did read everything that was there, but I didn't, I noticed a bunch of blank sheets. That's okay.
Uh, I have a motion and second, is any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Okay, you're right, we definitely need, need, uh, these kind of projects, so that's good. All right, uh, next thing, anything, anything else under new business? Uh, we don't, we don't have any elected officials here, I wonder why. They were, they were out, they were out, they were out all night last night.
Yeah.
We still had to have our meeting, ten, you, you weren't going to let us up, were you ready?
Nope.
You'd be here.
Absolutely.
Okay, reports from county commissioners, Commissioner Bloom.
Okay, first, I, I want to thank the two commissioners of the kind words that they had said about the Ageless Friends Project before the meeting, uh, last week. Synopsis, I was extremely honored to represent, uh, the citizens and Montague County Commissioners at last Wednesday's, uh, private screening at the Dutch Ambassador's residence, and it was Dutch Remembrance Day and that's why it was very important to them. Um, uh, basically, the similarities between, uh, the area where Margaritton is and the graves, and there's eight thousand three hundred and one graves which, uh, the Netherlands take care of, and this movie has hit a nerve, um, both in the Netherlands and it's starting to hit, it's, as I said, it's, it's received already five international awards, but it's more what it's done for Osage, Scots Run and the Morgantown community. As we watch the show, I can tell you that it's not a positive movie, it's, it's a movie that put closure to a very difficult time and situation. And when the movie was done, uh, there were a number of World War Two people from both the Netherlands and Americans who were invited and they were, you know, there was a lot of tears, there was a lot of feeling good to put some conclusion, it's been seventy years and it's still like yesterday. Um, the exciting thing was afterwards, um, the ambassador asked, he was not planning on coming to Morgantown, he has now reconsidered because he thought it was so moving and he wants to come to thank us personally for doing this, which was very exciting because now we also now have the Washington media coming, we have the international media from the Netherlands coming. And, um, with that being said, as you know, we had, uh, the West Virginia Humanities Grant, we had received one, but in the second round, we, we, we lost a mini grant. Um, I was able to write a grant, got a thousand dollars from the CVB and what I'm requesting, if Renetta can find a thousand dollars, it would just pay for the transportation costs of the producer and director come from the Netherlands because he would like them to be there. And that was part of the grant. So, it would be, uh, a thousand dollars, we already got a thousand, that two thousand dollars would pay for it. So, after I finished talking, I would ask that we could, you know, if we can find it in the budget, to look for the possibility, to pay for what the grant was supposed to pay for.
This fiscal year.
This fiscal year, this fiscal year. Um, but I, I can't say enough about, uh, the importance of this film and also a unique story. Uh, as you know, Jean's Beer Garden is, is shown in the movie and...
Yeah, classic.
Yes, and I received an email from an individual who was at the Pittsburgh Airport and all it said was, I'm from the Netherlands, saw the movie, how do I get the G's? I just thought that was a classic. So, I gave him directions to come down from Pittsburgh to...
That'll make you all born.
Yes, oh, that would make, yeah. Um, but I, I did want to say, I mean, it was just a very moving, it was a tremendous time. I have, I want to thank Mike Ellis and West TV, they did a great thirty-minute program about it. We have a program which I will talk about next week. Tickets are now just starting on sale, county commission, only five dollars, and we're really hoping to get a lot of the veterans and their families to come to it. Um, we're, it's on June eighteenth and we'll be selling tickets now. Uh, but I did want to just say, it was a tremendous experience and one of the things on my bucket list, because I've never been to an embassy, so I, I must admit that. Um, the other thing I do want to just talk about real quickly, I, I can't say enough and I know that you two will also talk about it, it is a very difficult financial time right now and I think the citizens of Montague County did something that, I have to admit, surprised me. Um, they really went out on a limb, you know, decided on at least four of the six levies to go forward, the quality of life and the importance while everything else and the, the combinations and the talk about the state of West Virginia, especially after the, yes, last night, and the direction it was going in, another direction. Montague County continues to go in a positive direction, the community people realized that this was something that was important. And with that, with the TIF going on, the new thousands of jobs that are coming up, I, I mean, I'm just very proud to be with the two of you to say that we pass those levies and we're going to move forward on it. And I, and I did want to just tell you that, so, um, thank the citizens of Montague County, thank the citizens of the city of Morgantown, especially for the volunteer fire department. You know, they, they could have voted it down and they didn't, so, again, I just want to say that. Um, would it be permissible to request, if that's okay with you, the thousand dollars, if we can find in this year's budget?
Yeah, well, why don't you go ahead and, and allot it and then we'll just approve it as part of a budget adjustment.
Okay, no, great.
Next week.
And it would be for economic development because we're bringing...
It's out of the economic development.
Economic development, yeah. Because we're getting...
Clearly economic development, yeah. And we, we, we might not even have to change it out of line item, but I mean, we assign it, but we'll, we'll check to make sure.
Okay, that's fine then, thank you.
And just put it along the agenda for next week.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, that's it.
Commissioner Hawkins.
Hard to follow, Tom. Uh, planning commission does meet tonight, so I'll be there tonight. We, uh, I did represent Montague County last Thursday for the ribbon cutting of the new, uh, CVB building, uh, in Kingwood, uh, so that's on Price Street. Uh, I would like to take this time to congratulate Carrie Blaney and her staff on a great job with the elections yesterday, uh, great voter turnout, thirty-eight percent.
Level three.
Some places I know had lines, that's possibly why we were there later last night, but that's a good thing. Uh, to the nice ladies who made me show my ID when they asked me why I was there, I applaud you for doing your job correctly, all right? That's a, that's a good thing. And to the nice lady who told me that she lived on Jake's Run and I told her I knew where it was. So, I also would like to thank Montague County, uh, because of what they did yesterday. This is an encompassing, caring community that I am very proud of. Uh, they proved by their vote that quality of life is something that is important to them. Uh, and especially, congratulations to the volunteer fire department with whom I've been working for the past year. And, you know, we, we did, did we point them in a direction? Yes, we felt that it was going to be necessary, but they did the work as well as all the other groups, uh, that, that got approval. So, it's a very good morning, I think, here in Montague County.
Well, between the two of you, it's almost impossible to follow. Both did a tremendous job, you always do. I, I'm very supportive of the strength of this commission, I mean, it's reflective of, um, tu- addressing the tough, tough issues. A lot of people have no comprehension of the, the issues that, that we face each and every other week and how well we work together on it. I, I have to, uh, echo Commissioner Bloom's statements that Montague County has moved into a whole new level, new level and new direction. Uh, unseen, uh, by any, not only any other county in West Virginia, but just about any other county of the three thousand sixty-nine counties out there. Uh, you noted that, uh, the National Association Counties recognize Montague County as the leadership of that and other counties following suit. This, this movie is going to do, uh, do tremendous things. Uh, we work, uh, very well together and I always emphasize that there, there... You're the English person, but really there's no I in commission, that's for sure. They got, the commissioners, uh, really have to work together, uh, and I think we've, we, we've done an extremely good job and we can't do anything without the support of the kind of people that came forth and volunteer their time and their effort and their work and commitment to making this a better community. So, I congratulate all those people that did anything for putting, uh, putting a sign on their chest, a sign in their front yard. I congratulate everyone of, all their efforts and, and work. Uh, and just to echo, uh, what Commissioner Hawkins said, uh, this community has, has proven that it's worthy of that national recognition, uh, I believe, through these votes, that they are going to protect their community and move forward. And problems in, in Charleston or, or all, uh, those are the problems that need to be solved down there, but the people here are willing to step up and work to solve the problems here. So, I commend the people that, uh, worked so hard and came forth. I am, I am extremely pleased that this was a purely citizens' effort. Uh, there was no taxpayer money paid to advance any of these, uh, programs. It was done by the citizens, uh, and it was done properly and in the, in the best light of a democratic society. Uh, so I, I've got to, I got to praise not only us, all the people that worked so hard, but the citizens as a whole. Uh, and of course, I got to throw in, uh, all the county employees. They work each and every day and we got, we got four of them, well, five of them are calling out there here, here today. And I want them to hear, but I also want them to pass it on to the other employees how great we, greatly we appreciate the employees of the county who work each and every day to make this county a better county.
Indeed.
Okay, uh, anything for, anything from you, Renetta, or Bobby just came in, do you have anything? Okay.
Move for adjournment?
Second.
I have a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you.